Hey, you're up.
All right, like to call to order the Grand County Commission meeting on March eighteenth at two thirty P M. We're going to have a training workshop by the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity Training. We can get that started. Here. Yeah, go ahead and sit there. And I think that you don't have to, like, these microphones are gonna pick you up now.
Oh, okay.
So that's great. And in a minute, I think. Quinn will put your um there your.
Yeah, so I'm Deborah McKee. I am the Outreach Manager for Grand County for the Center of Rural Development that's housed within the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. So I cover Sanlon, Grand, Carbon, Emery Counties. I am local and rural gal myself, just down the road. Um, so I'm here for you for all things economic development through GOYO. And then online, we also have our Director for the Center of Rural Development, Colette Cops. And then we also have James Dixon, the Director of Community Grants, who's gonna actually be doing the presentation. I do want to allow Colette to say hello and um, you know, say a few words. I'm sure many of you know her. She was in my position before myself, so just wanna kind of give her the opportunity.
Just wanted to say a quick hello and uh apologize for not being able to attend in person. Uh, really looking forward to this training today and all of the questions that you may have. And thank you for making the time to meet with us today.
So glad you have on. So I'm actually going to turn it over to James Dixon and let him go through um the PowerPoint. But now we've been formally introduced and he'll be seeing a lot more of me, I'm sure, so.
Great, thank you.
Very nice to meet all of you and be here in here in Gray County. Let's see, we'll have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm sure with you in advance, however, I need to be able to see it. So is it going to be?
It'll probably alter it.
It'll be on that screen right away.
It's better for me to stand or?
Oh, you can sit. It's fine.
Uh, it's up to you.
You can.
You're the chair.
Yeah, you can sit. You can stand over here where whatever most comfortable for you.
Okay, how about that? How about I stand here at the podium if that's okay? And you're ready for the uh? I am. I'm ready. So uh by way of introduction, uh James Dixon with the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, the Director of Community Grants. And most particularly uh when it comes to community grants, we're talking about the Rural County Grant and the Rural Communities Opportunity Grant.
James, if you use that microphone, then everybody out here can hear you better.
That one, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I didn't know I was, if I was supposed to speak to the ceiling like.
Let's go to YouTube and Zoom. That one goes to the room.
Okay, so everyone can hear me. I hope. That's that's great. We uh uh wanna take the opportunity to uh do a couple of things here with this presentation. Wanted to inform you uh about these programs and your role in them. And also to uh train up uh to the best that we can, uh your County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board. And um so uh while you have received some material from us and maybe have read through it um and familiarized yourself with it, uh that'll that'll be great and hopefully it'll lead to some questions. If you have not, perhaps this uh presentation will help uh you understand um your role and the role of the uh County Opportunity or Advisory Board as well at the same time. So we'll take this as a training session, but also a unique session. That's okay with you. Uh, great. So yeah, if you leave me the next slide, that'll be great. Thank you. So um the County Economic Opportunity Advisory Boards, which we call C E O Boards, are established by state statute. Um, and it they are pre-registered to uh the administration of a couple of our important grants that come out of GOYO. Um, so we can go next. Wanna make sure that uh it's clear about the formation of the board. These are statute court directives um so that you do know. Uh, the board needs to be a board uh made up of not less than five representatives and uh covering at the very least uh each one of these five areas that are bullet pointed uh bullet points for you. A county representative, a representative from a municipality within the county, uh a representative from workforce development, uh private sector representative and a member of the public at large, basically. Now, you can have a body or this uh C E O Board can be made up of more than just these five. Uh, if uh the commission is inclined to appoint a number of others, that's completely appropriate uh so long as they have some um expertise or um uh, you know, experience in economic development and those things that are that drive our economies. Uh, we would appreciate that. Uh, just a couple of things that I would say here with regard to the board formation, and I know that you have a board. And I know that it's uh it's duly organized uh now, uh and and most recently uh we've uh been able to correct some of those things there. But let me give you a couple of suggestions uh and when we were looking at the formation of the board. Number one, the county representative, we would highly suggest, you can do what you want, but we highly suggest that it's not a voting member of your county commission. It could be a member of you. You could, you can have a member of your county commission there, but um uh to uh avoid any conflict of interest or double voting um in the case where there might be influence on this board, which is an advisory board to you, uh we would uh highly suggest that a council member or a commission member is not a voting member of this board.
It's hard, aren't they?
When we talk, yeah, go ahead.
But we do have um someone from our admin office that's on that board, and they are listed as a voting member. And so
Yes.
that that's okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate that. If you have any questions, stop me at any time.
Yes.
Um, also, uh with regard to private sector, sometimes that's um um a nomenclature that is misunderstood. Uh, in this case, when we're talking about private sector representation, we're really talking about private sector business representation. Somebody from the business world in the private sector, um not just another citizen, right? So uh we're, you you may have another citizen as your member of uh of the public who lives in the county, kind of an at-large. But uh we would love to have somebody from the private sector of business, private business sector as a a a member of your voting. Next slide, if you will, please. Okay. All the board members are appointed for for your terms. We prefer that they are staggered. Um, so that every two years as um terms uh uh come due that um we don't vacate the whole board. And and so there's a turnover every other year po- potentially of board members, but without completely having to reform the whole board. And that's basically what we're talking about here. And if there's a vacancy, if somebody resigns from the board, uh in midterm, uh we ask that you reappoint somebody in that place uh as soon as you possibly can and um allow them to finish the term for which they are replacing. And then have a reappointment or a uh, you know, vacation and replacement, in case maybe. Um, it is a requirement from the board that they nominate and uh vote into place a uh chair and a vice chair annually. We encourage, there's another encouragement for you, that the chairman uh or chairperson of the board that doesn't serve more than two consecutive terms or at years. Uh, allowing some turnover there, allowing uh some new opportunity and perspective there as well. Uh, however, it's just a suggestion. It's not a requirement. You can uh, you can manage that as as you will.
Did you say two terms or two years?
Two years.
Okay, two years.
Yeah. Okay, and a majority of the C uh C E O Board constitutes a quorum. If you've got a board of five, then we're looking to make sure we're not uh doing any business if there's only two members of the board present. Uh, uh, quorum is three out of five. Or if it's a larger board that you formed and there's larger numbers, then we're looking at majority numbers to uh constitute the activities of the board. And uh the majority vote of a of a quorum constitutes a recommendation that would come to from the advisory committee to the commission. All right. Um, because the C E O Boards are established by state statute, that it it requires them to act under the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act, wherein they are required to make sure that they are meeting standards ethically and with regard to governance um in the same manner as any other public uh position or board or committee or commission. As we list here, among other statute order requirements, that uh this includes having quorum, a quorum present, present for meetings, adheres to conflict of interest practices, advertising meetings, agendas, and making sure that we're taking care of uh minutes in the recording meetings. So these are clearly supposed to be open and public meetings and well advertised to make sure that they're transparent and legal. Any questions on that? All right. Let's see, did we skip one? Oh, okay, here we go. Um. These boards are were formed uh for really one, two purposes. Now, they might be expanded and you could use them in in certain ways as you desire. You are the commissioners. Um, you're the elected body, they're the recommending body. Uh, but they were formed for two purposes, and the purposes are with re- uh related to the two grants that we offer uh that come to, potentially come to the county and come in some of the communities within the counties. That is the Rural County Grant. And we'll talk about so uh what that means. I'm sure you're aware. But we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then the Rural Communities Opportunity Grant. So uh with, as it concerns the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, the boards are formed strictly for these uh grants. But if the commission sees the need or the opportunity to use that board for other economic development uh purposes, they're welcome to do so. In the end, though, in our office, we are only concerned with their activities related to the these two grants. Okay, uh responsibilities of the C E O Boards. Um, and and this is really what they're uh supposed to be doing as it touches these two grants. Uh, the C E O Board should be assisting and advising the legislative body, you on a few things, the application for the Rural County Grant and the Rural Communities Opportunity Grant. Um, and they should um advise you on projects that are appropriate for the use of economic development funds that comes through these grants. And um then also they're responsible for helping with the preparation and annual reporting of these grants and their uh primary app- applications each year. There, that's their duties, uh again, regarding their responsibilities or their activities against these grants um so far as GOYO is concerned. So as an introduction to you and public with regard uh to the Rural County Grant, the Rural County Grant is a two hundred thousand dollar a year grant. Uh, it it, we might call it a pass-through. Um, it is guaranteed to come to you so long as you have uh met that certain criteria. And we'll hit those criteria buttons here in just a second. But um the bulleted points here are really what we see as economic development. And within these bulleted points, you can imagine many, many activities and projects that that may occur. But we keep these definitions broad so that you can do and make your own planning decisions regarding the use of this two hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, so those are business recruitment, development, and expansion, workforce training and development, and infrastructure, industry, industrial building development, and capital facilities improvements for business development. And we'll go to the next there. Okay. The second grant is the Rural Communities Opportunity Grant. And this is a uh, it has the same three uh subject points in those bullet points that we just went over are related again to this this grant, only on a different level. And the different level is the quantity of uh money that can be uh awarded to a county and the fact that it's competitive. The competitiveness comes from the fact that there is a limited amount of money that is allocated towards this overall grant every year. Last year, we had five point four million dollars. We um awarded all of that to twelve awards. Um, but that was against thirty applications. So um there are some winners and losers here in a competitive uh effort to see greatest impact across the state in our rural areas for projects that are driven by economic development. So uh, a Grand County's one, so an R C O G or two. Um, a WAB's one, uh and has one in place right now, City of Moab does. And um and so uh what we have here are uh some good grant writing that has has led to some awards. We're really looking into grant writing that is quality and well-prepared and well-budgeted and that with an excellent narrative on the use of funds with regard to budget and uh and where the money is gonna go for uh its impact. Um, when it comes to R C O G, we're really talking about a a uh a grant that is scrutinized by another committee that is also legislatively uh formed, which is called the Rural Opportunity Advisory Committee. That's a an advisory committee of seven individuals that have oversight, not only for the R C O G, but our other rural programs, including R C G and the program we call Ready, Rural Employment Development Incentive. So that committee uh is organized to, as as, as I said, seven members, and they are heavily involved in uh reviewing applications at the competitive level for the R C O G and making recommendations to our um Executive Director of GOYO for awards. This coming uh year, uh F Y twenty-six, we anticipate that we'll have five point two five million dollars. Uh, so far as we can tell, that's what the legislature allocated to us this year. And so we'll be uh opening that competitive application again in uh October and encourage you to planning for and towards those of application to R C G. R C G, uh the Rural County Grant comes around every year. And uh as we said before, it requires not only an application and a duly-formed uh C E O Board, but it also requires annual reporting. So annual reporting for the R C G will open on May fifteenth and close on um July thirtieth. That is required, uh submitted, must be submitted to us before we open up the new application for F Y twenty-six. If we don't receive it, then we can't open that applica- the new application for the new two hundred thousand dollars for you. Um, these are exercises that we need to make sure that your C E O Boards are actively involved in in the annual reporting and the application preparations. So we highly encourage that your C E O Boards are very active and not only convened when uh it's time to put in an application. We anticipate that the C E O Board is meeting with you, making recommendations regularly, but most especially when it comes time for applications, as they propose to you uh how the funds can be used to the benefit of economic development in in the county. Now, that being said, um, you are the elected body. And as a result, um your recommending body, C E O Board, is just that. They act much like a planning and zoning commission. Uh, they vote. However, as they present to you, you have the final say. Uh, so if there are points to a recommendation that you do not agree with or you feel like there's uh funding that should go in another place in a different direction or in different quantities, whatever that case may be, we can certainly override their recommendations. Our requirement from the state is that the board is functioning and is communicating with you and then fulfilling their other su- assignments for preparation and annual reporting. In the end, you will use the money as you see fit. Um, any questions on that? When we receive an application for this next year, F Y twenty-six, we will receive a an application from you. And what we anticipate is that you will have had meetings with C E O Board that that puts forward to you their recommendations for the next year's two hundred thousand dollars. However, in your application, your final application that comes to us, it needs to reflect what you decide to do with the two thou- two hundred thousand dollars. Making a note clearly that the C E O Board has acted as an advisor in the case. Um, uh, okay, so there there's our second criteria. Number one, the the board needs to be operational, functional, duly organized and 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 working. Second, uh the annual reporting, here's a list of the things that you can anticipate will be expected to be reported upon in um in the annual report. Basically, we're saying, okay, where did the money go? What did you do with it? Where is it being held if it hasn't been expended? And um and then give us a report of its impact. Uh, again, this is about um you taking advantage of this money to use it in your way. We're not dictating, with the exception of these broad descriptions of how they should be used or where they can be used. Okay, and the third criteria is the application itself. Uh, and I think we've probably gone over that well enough. Um, anticipating the economic development projects and activities that you will put forward in the in the in the new fiscal year, proposing a budget and how and giving us an idea of uh expected deliveries and how deliverables and outcomes. When we talk about deliverable outcomes, you're projecting what you think you will do with the money and what the uh end effect may be, right? Uh, we understand that in the end, after all, uh there can be some adjustments. We just appreciate you contacting our office. And if there's a major adjustment, we're welcome. You're welcome to propose something fresh and new that uh may cause us to amend a contract. We will, we'll gladly entertain that as well. Again, against hopefully the recommendations or the least advice of the C E O Board as well. Okay. Great. Uh, I wanted to give you some examples of some projects that are happening uh across the state uh under these um uh programs. Tell me, although if you've got any questions for me at this juncture, I'm happy to try to answer. Great, good enough. Okay, so we have those three descriptors for proper use of economic development dollars, right? And one of them is workforce training and development. So here's a quick list of four activities that are actually happening in other counties across the state. Um, you can see that there are some training programs going on to develop workforce. Um, the second one is quite interesting to me, and I think it's really um pretty kind of cool, um kind of awesome. And this is happening in Emery County, this junior entrepreneurial program. That was, they they came up with the idea that uh they should be teaching business principles and entrepreneurship to uh very, starting from very young. So we've got some uh, uh, in fact, a few months ago, we were in Emery County, they gave us a presentation. And uh some nine-year-olds got up there and told us about the businesses, the business that they had developed. You know, eleven-year-old, thirteen-year-old kids that are learning the principles of business and actually starting to sell products. Uh, so that that was that really quite impressive. Now, if we don't have to start at the junior level, we could be teaching entrepreneurs uh entrepreneurship to uh people my age, so it's all good. Uh, that's an impressive activity that's going on there. Um, partnering with uh local college, custom fit programs, uh uh other training, uh we've got a couple of counties that are involved in training uh for specialized certifications such as C E O licensing, truck driving, and um general contractor licenses are being subsidized by Rural County Grant Money uh in a couple of places, uh one place in uh in uh in Vernal in particular, where they're doing contractor licensing because they have a lack of general contractors in the area. So uh I think that's an excellent use of of funds and and they presented that to us and we said, absolutely, let's do it. Allow them to uh subsidize their licensure fees and costs. Okay, the next slide will uh cover that second category, which is business recruitment, development, and expansion. Uh, here's some examples of things that uh other counties are using this uh within this category. Their business marketing and advertising. Um, Duchene County has a great gift certificate for business program where they've actually uh purchased the certain value of the gift certificates that can be used in local businesses throughout Duchene County. Uh, I, that has been very, very successful. Um, another thing that's uh been highly successful in Duchene County itself, and again, just throwing out a couple of examples, is that they have had customer service training. And uh they thought, well, some people have questioned whether, how effective is that gonna be? But if you're gonna go to the local restaurant and you have a teenager come to you and he's uh he's uh uh not very pleasant and wants to know how mu- how, you know, whether you want fries with that, you know? And you don't get a great customer experience, right? That was really the intention. How do we raise up the youth for them to uh realize that they, being the face of a business is critical? And that they ought to put on a good face that represents the business well. So they've had two or three years now very successfully training young people how to deliver customer service on behalf of the businesses they work for. And uh it's grown a year in and year out. And uh the the program at the end is always uh highly complimented. And I'm gonna go get more people to join this class every year. Regional business summits, we encourage that. Um, and we, there are a lot of business summits that happen around the uh the state. Sometimes you might be involved in one that is a regional one. Please that you would uh help contribute to the finances of business summits and and. Please that you would uh help contribute to the finances of business summits and and chambers of commerce and that kind of thing. Good example of another one that we see that's been highly effective in use of not only RCG funds, but also our COG funds. Is in Vernal and their downtown revitalization has been highly successful. And uh they've they've cobbled together a combination of of uses with both of these grants. To uh really affect the and make a huge change and change in their downtown district. Been very, very impressive. Out in Tuila County, this last one, um they uh. Involved themselves in being site-ready and that is uh in conjunction, coordination with E D Utah. To prepare place and acreages to recruit businesses into. Site-ready meaning infrastructure is is prepared to invite uh industry to come in. And establish themselves there. So there's some examples for you about business recruitment, recruitment and others. Project examples, uh uh touching infrastructure, capital, facilities improvements for business and so forth. We've seen business innovation center operations increase. We've seen coworking spaces uh and innovation centers uh being established. Uh we've got uh robust sub-grant programs that are happening in some counties, not all, but in some. But where uh they may provide um. New equipment for businesses that are growing and other mechanisms for business growth. Um so sub-grants have been very, very successfully used with the use of use of uh some of these funds. Some of them towards new machinery, but also in the development of our infrastructure for growth. Okay, any questions? Great. All right, let's uh turn the page. On the next one. We want to emphasize um. From our perspective of Goyo, what the difference is between community development and economic development. Our focus is on economic development, but we know that often these things uh cross paths and sometimes intertwine. So I've uh we've written down some scenarios to you and I'm just gonna read these scenarios to you. And then hopefully they will become clear as to their 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 differences. So in scenario one here. A county needs an upgrade to upgrade its electrical power grid to serve its its communities. It, its primary intention is to replace aging infrastructure and to secure redundancy for to protect against power outages. This will require upgrades uh to transmission lines and to displace uh poles. Uh and put. Lines down under the ground. The county and its community's residents and businesses alike will generally benefit from the improved uh electrical infrastructure. Okay, so let's go to scenario two. County needs to upgrade its electrical power grid, same sounds like the the first scenario, but. Two manufacturing companies are expanding their businesses, requiring more electricity to uh for new buildings and equipment operations. This will require upgrades to transmission lines and displacement from poles to underground lines. These companies are within a mile of each other and upgrades along. A common corridor will deliver the power both need to operate and expand. Both companies also estimate they will need several new employees due to business expansion. So if we go to the next slide there. Under scenario one, the generalized benefit of the new electrical. Infrastructure would be considered community development as we see it. Even though it will likely have a positive ancillary effect on local businesses. In this case, the county should use other resources, not RCG, RCOG. Under scenario two, the new electrical infrastructure will directly affect business growth and employment opportunities. Improving the tax-based personal incomes and discretionary spending. This would be considered economic development and is the proper use for RCG and RCOG funds. Um, any questions on that? This uh.
That's my page. Um, on that point, um there's a bill that just passed through into federal Congress that allows. Uh funding like this that was originally designed for business infrastructure. To be actually used for recreation economy infrastructure. Like we just put in power at Utah Raptor State Park, I don't know how that was paid for. State, I guess, but is that's something just throwing out there that that. If a community like ours that has, is really run on recreation assets, sometimes those type of investments are needed. Um, and not the traditional manufacturing prep kind of way that you're describing, so. There probably isn't an answer to this question actually, but just throwing that out there that. That's something that more and more communities that are investing in outdoor recreation infrastructure, if there was flexibility on how that money can be used. It's not it.
I appreciate the question, I I probably directed, this is how we would correct.
Okay.
This is how we would direct you, we would say, okay, uh sounds good, sounds like you might have a plan, definitely a need. But we're gonna also turn you to other resources.
Yeah.
So that was gonna, that's gonna be DNR for the outdoor recreation and all of their tra- trails and those kind of uh.
Sure.
Opportunities there to expand recreational spaces and trailways and so forth, and we're gonna turn you to the. Now, if we can come in and say, okay, this makes sense to add a few more dollars. For, for example, from RCOG. And 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 we know we have partners from these other uh uh grant opportunities that come from these. Those places, then we would encourage that.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Great, thank you for the question, Shada, and in fact, that leads to other things, um. Uh we are more than happy to um. Uh encourage you to identify your stakeholders and and to work with and together with other departments. Uh if uh if there's something here that we can contribute. Uh here's a scenario, here's a, here's for example. And uh. We've got uh the broadband center that is heavily involved in attempting to distribute three hundred million dollars. And federal funds. Uh to last mile users uh for inter- for internet. Uh, we know that uh a couple of our counties are using some of their RCG funds. To help establish those last mile places or spaces. Especially as they're connected to business. So if our CG money is uh can be cobbled together, our RCOG money might be joined together. With the project that, for example, would be related to broadband expansion. And there could be half a dozen other things that some of this money could be used for. So it's uh really up to your uh identification of need. And how you feel like, in the end, this is gonna improve your business. Tax collecting and uh growth in a in in economy. Round here. So um yeah, we'll be a partner, but also we'll be the best resource we can possibly be within within. Within the parameters that are set under the. The grant description. Um, we uh will have literature for you. Only have a few copies, you may have printed off of some things, I will be making a couple of change, but changes to this document that supports this PowerPoint. Uh for you and get it out to you by the end of the week. Uh the only adjustments here really uh from what you would have seen if you already printed this off here. Is that to recognize the new uh county classifications by populations. This is uh. The last year's stuff and the previous year's stuff, recognizing classifications and those are important because. Um and and RCG, RCOG in particular, it requires matching funds. And those are based percentages based on the size of the counties. So uh there's been a a a new law passed in this last session that changes um. Population ranges for classifications, since I need to recognize that in this document, that would be really the only change to this document. But we'll make sure it's accurate too.
Along with that document, uh I please uh give your contact information uh also of both.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Matt.
You bet, you're welcome to contact us directly, of course, Deborah is uh your local. Local gal that may bother you, right there. At Becken Call, right, and I'm generally up in Salt Lake. If they let me out of my box out there, and I love to come down and see folks like you in real Utah. Not just rural Utah, but real Utah. Thank you.
I did have, I had to have a question about um using the money from some of one of the grants. Or funding an economic development position at the county level.
Um, early on. Um, okay. I should uh preface this by saying it was never contemplated that that would be the use of the. Especially RCG. However, we were very uh aware that there are smaller counties that just do not have administrative help. And so we have allowed that in the past. Um, some of the funds and for, for example, Daggett County. Have nine hundred and ninety-four residents in the whole county. Uh and it's really very, very difficult for them to have somebody in Manila. Next to the lake there that um has anything to do with the economic development, they still have staff. So they have used to about forty thousand dollars a year. Uh each year in RCG funds to support the employment of an economic development. Um, uh a a couple of other counties have have also used the funds for those purposes. But for the most part, they've started to back off of that. Um and are starting to be supported uh solely by administrative costs of the government money. So that's it, that that would be up to you.
Thank you.
It's not a no.
All right.
Anybody, yeah, we have a little bit of time, so.
We have a little bit of.
Yeah.
Yeah, do um, I can mention, yeah, thank you, I'm Chris Wilson, I'm the chair of the uh Economic Opportunity Advisory Board here. You mentioned the youth entrepreneurship program, uh and that sounds really interesting. We have sort of received some guidance in the past. That we couldn't touch things that might tie in or be related to anything sort of K to twelve education. That's that's my understanding of what our guidance was, I wasn't involved directly in this conversation, so I just wondered if you could help me sort of. What does a program like that look like where it works to support youth programs? Versus some that might be tied to K to twelve where you'd say it should be funded through the education department.
Yeah, for sure, okay, so um. We recognize that uh public education has its own funding sources. And so really, that's the difference. If the county is is uh. Uh wants to instigate and implement a program. For entrepreneurial studies or something like that and specialized training apart from that, then certainly this would be. Used uh uh an appropriate place to use it, and that's how Emery County is is using it, it's it's separate and apart. Any educational funding that goes through public schools.
Yeah, so kind of like the program wouldn't take place at schools or be tied to.
No, they're actually.
Programs, so.
After school, um governed by the governed body rather than the.
Yeah.
Public educations.
Okay.
And and that program's also run um in partnership with the chamber.
Okay.
And the chamber also distributes their sub-grants for that county as well, so they kind of, you know, really manage a lot of the. RCG funds, maybe they don't have an economic development department or director or anything of the sorts. So the chambers kind of stepped that a lot.
Yes, that one really does live with the chamber.
Yeah. One more question if you don't mind, Shara's, uh RCOG. Is it? Can we get it every year? Or I guess my sort of understanding has been that. You couldn't reapply until previous funds had been spent down. Which almost by definition meant that it was like an every other year that the county could really be behind an application. Is that really correct?
Uh, yeah, that is accurate.
Okay.
Uh, we, uh you may apply, but likely uh preference will be given to those that don't have anything or have no contract outstanding award yet.
Yeah.
Right? So it is compet- competitive. Um, uh so there's. So sure, there's been an exception to that, except for in one case where. Uh uh in the end, our um. Goyo Executive Director has full discretion over awards. And and so if he is inclined to uh direct an award to a county that already has an award. He has that discretion to do so. If uh there, that's not the case, and that's, I I only know of one. Um out of the three or four years that we've been running this now, um it's, it's encouraged that you. Apply, win an award, complete the contract terms. And receive full reimbursement before you apply again.
Okay, thank you.
And I would encourage the commission, now is your chance. To ask James all of your pressing questions, any questions you've had in the past, possibly. That you would like to ask James directly. The source themselves. Y'all are so quiet tonight, I'm really dry in here.
I'll ask one more question, it has to, it goes along with Chris, so one of the groups that we were looking to hope fund um. When we couldn't fulfill the chamber. Money this year was the Beacon After School Club, and it's not funded educational through our through our school district, the school district does. Donate some money towards them, but they're actually a separate entity, and so that's where, you know, it's it's so hard because. They're a separate entity from education, but they're at the school and their after-school club, um and so. Kind of what you said to me seems like they would fit in, that they would be able to fit in this grant.
And then just to kind of piggyback on that as well, I mean, I know myself, my kids went to Beacon. That allowed me to actually work an extra two or three hours at work. So a lot of parents, you know, who do actually get, you know, economic value by, you know, having those kids fill that gap for those two hours right there.
So uh uh from my, from my own understanding, is Beacon a charter school, is it?
It's an after-school program.
It's an after-school program run by a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah, that certainly, yeah, you can direct funding.
So they would be, they would be able to be.
Yeah, yeah, we're just uh attempting to separate the state funding from other state funding, basically, so. Schools, public schools. Uh separate from. More state funding.
I think Colette has some comments as well.
Okay.
So, um, I'm the one who in the past has advised the economic board not to direct. Economic funding towards this type of program. It's really, um. We're really wanting to get down to the heart of economic development programs in your county, and so we have to ask the question. Is this program driving economic development? Does this after-school program drive economic development? And does it, is it driving economic development on such a high level that it prioritizes? This funding over other projects in the community, and so. My comments is with the after-school program. Um, if it is technically childcare, after-school childcare. And as was commented, it's allowing parents to stay at work longer. Then that would be considered childcare and I would work to funnel that through a childcare grant. And again, put the emphasis on parent, the kids are there as childcare and so parents can stay at work longer. However, if it's just for an after-school program. I think we could line up dozens of projects ahead of an after-school care. Program that would be a priority in your county, so I would really weigh that out. Um, because again, even though it's not a school program. It's, is it driving economic development in your region? And so if we ask that question, it would probably score very low.
So I, yeah, to support that, I I think the bottom line really is, in in any consideration of the use of funds for RCG or RCG. We're really talking about, okay, what's the touch point to business? Is it truly driving and supporting business, business growth, business future? So. But that's your discretion.
Okay, that's great information.
Okay.
Um, and I think, Brittany, did you have a?
Yeah, I have a question, so I'm still learning all of this, I'm super sorry if this is a silly question. But um the RCG grant and the RCOG grant, so does the RCG grant can be sliced up to different people? But the, the RCOG is only one person or can it be sliced as well?
It's uh most of, most of the RCOG money ends up going to um, in fact, probably. It's uh, most, most of the RCOG money ends up going to, um, in fact, probably. Can't even think of the one. Uh, uh, but most of it goes to a singular large impact project. That's well, well planned out. Yeah, uh, there's nothing in, in, in any kind of rules that says you can't split it up. But I can tell you after four years completing the program, it's. The wardies, the ones that get the grants are the ones that are highly focused on a target. Uh, to uh, improve industry and business. And with one project.
How much detail are you looking for in that proposed budget?
Uh, and that's an excellent question. And this is where the CEO board is uber critical. Uh, because the best proposals that we've received are those that are highly planned out and, and anticipated. In other words, they may happen. Whether they get the grant or not, because they're critical to the growth of a, a business in the area. Um, and we want to support that. So what we're looking for really in an application is the. Highly prepared things, in other words, um, bids and estimates, costs of. The better prepared those budgets are with anticipated real costs are generally those that get grants. If it's a, a speculation and a guesstimation, uh, they will fall down on the, the award level.
Thank you.
And I am here, you know, for those RCOG proposals and the application process, I am here to kind of hold your hand, help you through that. Um, give a little bit of insight, um, obviously not write the grant for you, but you know, I am here to partner with you to get those applications in. So please use me as a resource. Um, just in my first year, I had three of my communities be um, awarded, so I, you know, feel a little confident that we can get over the line, so.
So one other service that we offer, which is through the Center for Rural Development, uh, touching these, these grants in particular, RCOG. Is that we now have an intent to apply application, which is a pre-application. That uh, really allows you to come to our office for a consultation about your ideas. So if you have an idea that's uh, that you think what might be really good for RCOG. And on August first through about August, or it's September first, we will open and tend to apply. That's an opportunity to give us this sh- uh, short scope of work description, approximate budget. And uh, some descriptors over how it's going to impact. And how you think it'll impact your economy. And then that opens the door for consultation with us as to how you can improve that, what you should be looking for. Uh, what the committee might be looking for to give you high ratings on a, on a real or future application for that. So that'll be open August first.
And then I think Commissioner Winfield's online has his hand raised. Get eye there. I just want all of the questions.
Alright, uh, Commissioner Winfield, go ahead, get here.
Yeah, I, I would just like to remind everybody that. Economic development in a broad sense is trying to develop other economies. To help diversify away from tourism. And although I have a. A heart for Beacon, I'm not speaking out against the Beacon program in any way, I believe that we have to be careful. That we're not stretching this imagination so far that we're almost at the edge of what this money could be used for, and I. Know that the county has multiple options of finding ways to support Beacon, and I, I would recommend that we look at the fact. Of what our economic development can look like in this county and try and steer a little bit more towards that, and I think that. Over the years, we've gotten a little bit away from that, and I'd just like to remind everybody, go back to the definition of economic development and. Let's put some thoughts to that rather than just trying to stretch this because it's a grant and something that we could be using. For this service, I, I just think we can look. Further and find other options to support Beacon, we've got a lot of options with this county. Thank you.
Thanks, is there any other questions?
Oh. Sorry, cut in if anyone was going there, um. Can the installed infrastructure uh, description? Is there, well, I have all three of you in one room. Uh.
Yeah.
Uh, is there any conflict with. Installed infrastructure on county owned land? Or is there a restriction to private owned or?
So long as it supports business, I mean, what, if, if, if we're talking about developing, if the counties are talking about developing as an example, an industrial park. Then absolutely, yeah, it doesn't matter whether it's privately owned or public.
Okay, sure.
Another example, you know, um, just down the road in Lanning, they received some kind of being, um. There's some RCOG funding for feasibility study to expand their gas pipeline to energy fuels. And so it is going to go through, you know, private property and its collaboration between, you know, the state and it's a, obviously a big project, but that's something that. Uh, supports industry and business in the county and, you know, was accepted by the board for the RCOG, so.
Okay, sure.
It's a brief example.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, you can direct them to me.
One more question.
And then, yeah, you can direct any question to me through email, contact me through. Uh, jadixon@utah.gov or econfrance@utah.gov, either one. We'll reply to your questions.
Okay, and I think we do have one more question.
One more, if you have a second, um. And I'm getting a couple of our other board members are online watching, and so this one actually comes through. Like that, um, we'd had a question as we're beginning this process of reviewing sort of applications, we did a call for applications this year for RCG and RCOG funding. Um, and you can point me to the county attorney or somebody else if that's more appropriate, but there's a question about recusals. Um, and whether, basically, you know, should board members, and it may apply, I don't know, to commissioners as well. Recuse themselves from decisions with any, you know, linked to certain businesses or things like that. And how, how do you think through that?
Great, it's a great question, uh, as was earlier on in the training, uh, you are subject to a public and open. Act. And uh, that, that is appropriate if, if a person is inclined to recuse themselves for whatever reason. Uh, so it really does come down to. That, that person's personal choice as to whether they feel like it's a conflict. It may be raised by the committee, it may be raised by the commission. Um.
Can I give you like a specific example? So if the Chamber of Commerce wants to apply for that grant and they sit on the board of that, is that a thing or no?
Sure.
So they, they have to recuse themselves or they don't have to? They just have to like.
Recommend they do.
Okay.
So refuse themselves from voting. But the, they don't have to recuse themselves from any discussion over the matter.
Yeah, there's three of us on the Chamber of Commerce on this board right now, but um.
Sure.
We'll figure it out, yeah. And.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to help too.
Yeah.
That's sure. Yeah, the attorney has.
And, and our policies are going to supersede as well some of the issues, so we have a, we have, as, as other counties do, we have a. Uh, conflict of interest, then we have the restricted conflicts that rise to additional levels. Uh, but this, this is something that's come up on a couple of different boards and I'll be given a training on it because we have, we've had a lot of questions on it. Um, at a minimum, individuals in their board roles, they need to be aware of what a perception would be. And then, and then it announced, I mean, really, you, the state of Utah is really forgiving in a disclosure situation. And the closer that you are to the actual, you know, in the circumstance, you guys are dealing with, you're dealing with funds and monies. That's going to be hard to say that there wasn't a material benefit. And so order caution, announce it, if you guys feel uncomfortable, you can reach out to me, I, I can reach out to the state as well and say, hey, look, here's, here's where we get harbored. Uh, sometimes there might be a distance, you know, if it was a, let's say hypothetically say. Business owner or nonprofit owner was on the board and they said, hey, you should give me my, my company a specific grant. Versus somebody on the chamber, there might be a little bit more distance. And there might be less of a perception, but when in doubt, you can shoot myself and the state an email on it and we can kind of discuss, and I think. The county's acting through a pass through, so we want to respect what the state wants to see with these funds, but then also for the county, we want to make sure our board members are not putting themselves in a position. And honestly, a lot of times it's going to be a perception issue, we don't want any of the board members to be, you know, their character to be impugned at all, and we want everything to look good above board, so.
Right, we, we have one more question, um, Commissioner Winfield online, and then we're going to wrap us.
And I just want to reiterate just how important economic, other businesses who are not. Dependent on tourism, which is one of the loudest complaints that we get from many is our overcrowding. Of Moab, so as, as we look at options for this money, we've really got to be looking for ways to expand the base that Moab has to where. We aren't so reliant on tourism as our only driver and something that helps to benefit. The entire community, right, and, and I'm not saying that Beacon doesn't. What I'm saying is, is that we've got to start looking at ways that we can help improve the base of our businesses in Moab. Thank you.
Thanks, and I just, I mean, I, we have twenty-six intent to apply right now, and our pipeline is so exciting, so. Um, we're really excited to have. Other options this year for these grants.
That's excellent, we're excited about that, if you need any, um. I don't know, some, the, subgrant divi- dis- design models. We've got a couple of counties that are just really doing very, very well with that. And happy to refer you to some of them and how they operate those subgrants. Uh, and because none of them do exactly the same. But they've modeled them to be a post impact, but also uh, fair with skin in the game, matching funds, things like that. Uh, I, I just want to wrap up with, uh, on the idea uh, about recusal and the conflict of interest from our office. Uh, when it comes to uh, applications that we receive for rural community opportunities. We have the Rural Op- Opportunity Advisory Committee, this board of seven. Um, and we have staffers, myself, Deborah, Colette, and, and a few others that review those things. However, we also find conflict of interest warrants. And we also accuse ourselves from any um, perception of conflict or um, association. With anybody that we've helped, as for example. Uh, if Deborah were to advise you uh, in an intent to apply situation and help you get to a, an application form. When it comes to reviewing applications, she will not be assigned to your application to be reviewed. If she represents, and she represents a certain reason, region, we would. Take all applications that come out of that region, so that there's no bias towards scoring. The point of view, and we do that across the, the board under this RCOG program to avoid any conflict of interest.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And. If you have a whole thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Quinn has my cards, we'll get some of James.
Okay.
Oh, I know, we've already got it.
My job, shot me.
Should I make a motion?
Yeah, still there.
I'll second it. Okay, I'll move to uh, go into closed session pending, we're going to go. Pending, please, Olivia. Barry's right behind you.
Motion.
Hang on, tell me who the motion was.
Um.
I made a motion.
Doc made a motion, and Mike has.
Hey, guys.
No, it was just.
Aaron.
Folks.
We're going to move into closed session, so, yep. Thank you, we'll be back in session a little after four o'clock if you guys want to come back for citizens to be heard.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Got a motion by Mike in a second by.
A motion by Jac, second by Mike.
All right, do we have um, a vote for moving into closed session?
All right.
On favor? Alright, so I have a, all in favor was Commissioner Hadler, McCurdy, McGann, Martinez. Hamless and Winfield, uh, having, being absent.
And Melanie, all you have to do is call the opposition, you don't have to, you don't have to declare who.
Just as.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're going to have to.
Pass unanimously.
Yeah.
Pass unanimously.
Right. Anything in question will need to be let back in.
Yes, so come back.
Just while we're.
And so then we'll just take a moment, make sure we get off the record and then we'll go into it.
It was seven zeros.
No, no.
She didn't, she didn't vote.
Or six zero.
Six zero.
Commissioner Winfield, did you vote?
Yes, I did.
Okay, six zero.
Six zero. Okay, what was the motion, sorry, sorry.
The motion to go into closed session was made by Commissioner Hadler, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy to go into closed session for pending any litigation.
Yeah.
They happened fast, I walked over.
I do fear with meetings. Shoveling, just keep shoveling. And we can turn.
Yeah.
You can pause the microphones. Whoever's.